Good morning, everyone. I'm calling for this work session, August 14th. Please join us in the pledge.
My friend that leads is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag that is standing in Mexico, with its symbol of great friendship among Montana and college.
Can we do this thing?
Yeah.
Yeah. He's motion to approve the agenda.
Don't mess up. So, she's getting...
Approval of agenda, vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The general purpose of the county work session is to inform the Board of Commissioners of agenda items that will be addressed at the meeting on, the regular meeting on Thursday, and for department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regards to matters in their respective departments. In accordance to Grant County Resolution 18-1, we welcome the public to attend. The work session, however, there's no public input at this meeting. Agenda item, Roman numeral five, we have a presentation regarding Holloman F-16 training over the Hila. Susan Beck, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Can I be on? Yeah. Okay. Thank you for including me in your agenda this morning. I appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on the Holloman proposal. And just to note that I did make a trip to Holloman, a visit there, and interfaced with the Vice Commander of the Wing as well as the Commander and some other leaders there at Holloman on June 8th. And so I think I have some current information. In addition, I have some other updates on research I've been doing, so I'll be talking about that. So today, what I'd like to do is I'd like to give you a little bit of information about the Holloman visit. I met with each of the commissioners individually, and some of those visits will be forward the visit to Holloman and some are after. So what I would like to try to do this morning is make sure that everyone is on the same page, and then move forward and give you some more information that I researched. And so I'll start with the Holloman visit, then I'll talk about the airspace optimization, and just a little update on the NEPA process, and then I want to talk about flying operations over Grant County in general, and what I'm doing about that. So, I think all of you are familiar with the fact that there is a significant shortage of pilots in the Air Force. Two thousand pilots approximately short. Because F-16s are such a large portion of the Air Force inventory, it means that about half this shortage is F-16 pilots. And therefore, it's crucial to the Air Force to catch up with that shortage. And why does the shortage happen? Well, it really happens sometimes the airlines begin higher and they offer bonuses to pilots to actually sign on with commercial airlines, which leads to a little bit better quality of life for Air Force members to have a little more stability with their families and things like that. So the shortages, for various reasons, also the operations step over, many pilots have to go overseas to the various conflicts that we have, and so it's, that's probably the quality of life of the pilots. So Holloman is trying to train 300 pilots per year, that is their goal, and they have taken some actions that you can see here on this slide to actually do that. One of the things to note about this is that Holloman, because they are a training organization, is actually, and I'm going to actually parse that out a little bit for you now, but because they are not an operational unit, they are a training unit, they are typically manned between 70 and 80 percent, which means that they don't have all the instructors they need, and that impacts their operations down there. Right now Holloman is actually responsible for the MQ-9 training. That's an unpiloted aerial vehicle, which you see here on the start, and I understand that, I see that the slides are kind of blinking for some reason, but basically, that was the main mission. And if you remember correctly, the Santa Fe, the legislature in Santa Fe actually passed an $85 million tax break, bill for the Air Force to build a brand-new facility for the S-16 training at Holloman. And so they're responsible for all training there. That is their main responsibility. Actually, right now, the wing at Holloman Air Force Base does not own F-16 training. The F-16 training was moved from the Air Force Base in Phoenix, and it is under the 54th Fighter Group, which is just about to move with the 49th Wing at Holloman. So in other words, on 1st of October, Holloman will own the F-16 training as well as the Army training, but they do not control it right now. All they're doing is supporting it right now. And that is important. Also, Holloman is going to be willing from their combat command to air education and training command, which provides a little bit more stability for the wing down there. So just a little update on that. And one of the things that tells you is that Holloman is not the one that is actually executing this NEPA process. It's the Air Force in the Pentagon, which is doing that on behalf of Holloman. Holloman's aircraft are older aircraft. You can see here the two types of aircraft that they fly. They fly the F-16 with the single cockpit, as well as the F-16 with the dual cockpit for training. Of course, the D model is heavier, takes more fuel to fly. Another thing too is that these aircraft are actually decertified for combat, and they have a Pratt and Wren engine, which provides less thrust, which means that they cannot go as far for training. In other words, if they have to vector around something for instance a thunderstorm, or go farther to start their training, that would cause less training to actually be accomplished. So another thing too to note about this is that, as you're aware, there are two squadrons that are based at Holloman on an interim basis. They came from Utah, from Hill Air Force Base in Salt Lake City, and those aircraft are actually combat certified, they're not decertified, which means that they are not expected to merge with the wing at Holloman, and they're actually expected to move on. So whereas originally I thought those aircraft may be permanently based there, it looks like they will not be there, that they will actually merge with some other units. There are actually Air Force Reserve units that are there rather than training units. So that's something that you'll be looking for to see what actually happens with those There's many different mission profiles that the Air Force flies, and their F-16 training from basic flight maneuvers all the way up through the most complex missions that the Air Force conducts. And one of the things to say about this is that I found out while I was there that low level training now is actually rare. And they have to know how to do low-level operations, but they do not spend a lot of time low-level. And the reason for that is because surface-to-air missiles around the world have gotten more capable. There are either Russian systems or American Air Force provided systems, so that if those aircraft flew over, they couldn't be shot down. So there's very little low-level training that Holloman will be conducting, although some, some operations will be low-level. Supersonic training is actually conducted. They do plans on supersonic training, but it's only at or above 30,000 feet, mean sea level. So it means that if there is supersonic training, it's not going to be low-level training. Like training is only about 10 percent of their operations, and it's not low-level training. So that's something also to know. Interesting line up, I made my visit to Holloman, I actually went down the night before and spent the night in them, of course, spent the day with the wing down there. And they were actually doing some night operations. I took off about 8:00 p.m., and of course, I heard them take off, because you can hear them take off. I never heard them land, I never heard anything that was going on, and they were operating very close to the base. So that was interesting, and doesn't mean that we wouldn't hear supersonic training or any training in particular, depending on what altitude they were operating. Other aircraft may train with the F-16s, there may be some other aircraft in the airspace, but typically only F-16s are training. This is mostly initial qualification training for brand-new pilots that are operating into the aircraft, and so usually they're just training with F-16s. If they need to train with tanker strikes and strong refueling, they go elsewhere. There are actually tanker traps where they have to do the training for them. Their projected suites are 10,000 annually. Authority again is one operational flight on a mission, goes out, and comes back to the base. And the needs may actually be a little bit higher than 10,000 because of the proficiency of the pilots, if they're GAVSing, because of some of these other things that you see on the screen. So we think they're maybe 10,000, it could be a little bit more than 10,000 actually. Departing of Chaplin first is an issue. This is something that happens, I think you're all aware of the defensive countermeasures that are used. The Chaplin is glass and aluminum strips deployed from a cardboard box. So whereas a cardboard box is obviously biodegradable, those strips are not, and they've persisted in the environment for a really long time. They're used for defensive countermeasures against radar, for instance, surface-to-air missiles and things like that. The flares are actually aluminum canisters containing flammable material. They're released at higher to mid-altitude, so say, think about 20,000 feet or so, and they are supposed to burn out by the time they get to 2,000 feet. And it really all depends on the flare. They do actually use training flares that burn out a little quicker than the combat flares that are used, but there is still the possibility of the flares burning for a little bit longer, depending on how they deploy. And there's also the possibility of dogs that land on the ground having not burned. So that would be another thing to take into account. There is a concern at Holloman for fire danger, and they're telling me that they do not use flares if there's moderate to extreme fire danger. They would not use the training flares. And they've also said, interestingly enough, that realistic training can be done without actually releasing the flare. So the aircraft, you know, the process that the Air Force aircraft goes through is actually the same whether they actually launch the flare or not. So that would be a decision that would be made probably on the day of the actual training, whether the, that these flares are not. There is a large number of flares and chaplins to be released in their training, and it would not be, it would not depend on which aircraft airspace they were in and couldn't be released in any of their airspaces. I want to talk a little bit about the airspace, and I have a map to share with you that is one that they gave me when I was down there. It's all about Holloman's special-use airspace. They have essentially two airspaces that they manually use. They use the Talon airspace, which you'll, you're familiar with because of Alternative 1, the Talon Military Operations Area. They have another airspace called BEAK MOA, and they also use a range called Centennial down at McGregor MOA, which is at Fort List. And then they make a lot of use of White Sands Missile Range, and I want to talk about these in a minute. But one of the things to know is that Holloman is not currently conducting any F-16 training over the Hila. And I asked them, you know, I asked several people down there, are you sure there's no F-16 training? And they said, no. There is no, currently no F-16 training over the Hila. I'm actually going to address this a little bit more in a later portion of my presentation. So some more information coming up. This is a map of the airspaces that Holloman is currently assigned. I just wanted to point this out to you. Red airspaces are airspaces that are controlled by Holloman Air Force Base. And you'll see the two airspaces, the northern one is BEAK, the southern one is Talon, and the southern one is called Valentine. They're not currently using Valentine. They consider it too far away. And also, it was designed for another mission, not for training mission at Holloman, and is actually nothing. But black airspaces that you see over to the east are controlled by Cannon Air Force Base, and they have a special operations mission, and those airspaces are being used for that mission. I believe it's possible that those airspaces have already been optimized and will not be further modified. The airspaces that you see near the Hila here are open Hila, actually. The yellow airspace is controlled by the New Mexico Air National Guard, and so that's something that I am looking into right now as to exactly what's happening here. The blue airspace, those are, that is an airspace that is controlled by the Arizona Air National Guard. So the northern airspace, the yellow one, is called Cato and Smitty, and the southern one is Reserve and Morrisey. Those are, the blue ones are controlled by the Arizona Air National Guard and are used by the Tucson Unit of the Air National Guard in Arizona. And I do have more information in my presentation about that. So just wanted to get you oriented to the map as it exists right now. The gray in the middle there, where you see Holloman, Holloman Air Force Base, let's see if I can point to it here. My laser pointer is actually not working on these screens, so I can't really point to it. But you see Holloman, in the middle as well, has two ranges, and a gray area that's in between all the airspaces. The gray area that's in between all the airspaces is White Sands Missile Range. And so you can see that they have two ranges there. Those are bombing ranges, where they actually practice, you know, putting ordnance on a target, as well as other live-fire tests and things like that, and training. They cannot do ordnance drops in any other area of the long ranges, as well as Centennial Range, which is down there at Fort List. So those are the existing airspaces. And I wanted to talk about the fact that Holloman's existing MOAs don't handle all the training needs currently, even basketized the airspaces where they're sitting with these other aircraft in mind. So for instance, the first one you see there on the left is the F-4. Second one is the F-15, for which, for instance, Valentine, and the southern one down in Texas, was designed. Those aircraft weren't Holloman back in 1992. So you can see that they really haven't done anything with their airspaces in a very long time. Of course, the aircraft on the way is the F-22. F-15 and, did I say F-22? So one of the things that they are looking at right now is that the airspace was designed many years ago without the training in mind, because the training didn't exist there at Holloman at that time, F-16 training. Let me talk a little bit about White Sands Missile Range. Of course, WISMA's primary responsibility is test and development for many different organizations, not only in the government, but also contractors to do tests there. Has to do with missile launches for the Army, as well as nuclear tests and other tasks. Now, they're not testing nuclear launches, but they simulate nuclear explosions and things like that, and look at what would happen if something like that came to pass. And their training missions, for instance, the F-16 training mission, as well as other aircraft training there are secondary to the primary mission of White Sands Missile Range. And this is by federal law, actually. So White Sands can present challenges to F-16 training because of the fact that the primary mission is not aircraft training. Holloman also does not control WISMA's scheduling, and that becomes a challenge as well. So they are working very closely with WISMA. Interestingly enough, WISMA's scheduling is non-computerized after all these years. I found that very interesting. And they're actually, you know, working on a board with a grease pencil and red, so that they, to schedule those airspaces over there. There are many different airspaces that can be used for training. So what happened was, the Air Force recognized this and has decided to take software that it had customized for another range, actually, Echo Air Force Base over in Northern Florida, and customize that software for WISMA. So the Air Force is actually paying to update that, upgrade that software and give it to WISMA for scheduling, so give it to the Army for scheduling. And that way, the Air Force will be able to maximize what's happening over WISMA. The software is hopefully going to be in use a little bit later this year. And even with all of that, what they're saying is it still does not handle all the training needs. But it will help them to stay closer to Holloman, actually make the best use of the space ever at WISMA. One of the things to know is that WISMA, as well as Talon and BEAK MOAs, would be the areas most favorable to support Holloman's goals. And that doesn't mean that they will actually be doing that. That doesn't mean that they will actually be staying there, but basically, they would be the most favorable to Holloman's goals. I'll talk about their specific goals in just a minute. They are saying that they need additional airspace, not just the airspace they currently have. So, as I mentioned earlier, headquarters Air Force has undertaken this regional optimization, airspace optimization project. And they're doing it actually all over the country, but one of the areas that they're doing it in is the Southwest. And this has to do with, you know, in Phase 1, airspace controlled by Albuquerque Center, which is part of the FAA. And so the Air Force is actually reviewing all current missions, ranges, and airspaces to make sure that they're optimized for current operational needs as opposed to legacy needs from the past. And they're conducting this analysis now. And of course, as you know, any changes that would happen would fall under NEPA. This is a picture of the Albuquerque air traffic on a, on a day-to-day basis, and I know that the screens are going on and off, I'm not sure why that's out, but basically, this is what the air traffic looks like in Albuquerque and Phoenix, et cetera, on a day-to-day basis. There is a lot of air traffic, and you can see how they typically will vector aircraft around these airspaces, such as WISMA and places like that. But it is a very complex process. The FAA is doing their optimization, and the Air Force is working together with the FAA on all of this. Thought that was kind of an interesting picture to show you. So as you're familiar with the airspace optimization, there are actually two alternatives that are being considered, and so one is expanding Talon MOA, which is that airspace that's down there at Holloman, or near Holloman, and the other one is expanding the Cato-Smitty MOA and adding LOBOs. And I'll just briefly talk about this, but I mentioned Holloman's goals earlier, and this is really very important. They want to ensure, of course, that all F-16 training is definitely accommodated in the airspaces that they have, but they also want to maximize training time and minimize transit time. So they're trying to do that, as well as limiting their impact on civil aviation, which is key too. These are, again, this is again the map of the airspaces, and you see that Talon is the middle red airspace there, and that's the one that they are addressing with Alternative 1, which of course you're familiar with. You can see that the Alternative 1 actually changes the shape of the Talon airspace, it expands it both to the south and also to the east, and designates low and high areas for training. So that's Alternative 1. Alternative 2, which you're familiar with, cuts off the Cato-Smitty MOA, actually, Cato in the north there. And actually, that, the northern airspace that's, that's not inside the line would be given back to the FAA. They're reshaping Cato and Smitty and expanding it southeastward with this alternative. They're also adding potentially the LOBOs MOA, which is that dotted line area. One of the things to note about that is, even though I asked them for a little bit more information about LOBOs, they don't have it, because it's part of the scoping process to determine where that airspace is, as well as how large it is. So this is a national chart, but it is not exactly where the airspace may be located. Another thing too, when I asked about this airspace, they were saying that they expect that, because it's very close to the airspaces controlled by the Arizona National Guard, that the Arizona Guard might actually do the scheduling for this. So that was interesting as well. One of the things to also know is that the original projected NEPA timeline looked like this. We had anticipated the release of the draft EIS in August, and we are not seeing it. And then, of course, the final EIS coming out later. Now basically, this is not happening right now. The, there is, they are still in the scoping process right now, which is just the first step. And they were in the scoping process when they came up here in November of last year. And of course, many people have submitted comments from here, and comments are still being factored in and reviewed. I don't think they anticipated the number of comments they actually received on this. And so because of that, they are delayed. They are expecting a possible three-month delay to the release of EIS, which could mean the draft EIS, which could mean later this year, or the beginning of next year, even possibly a six-month delay. They're not exactly sure. I'm watching for the release very closely, and I'll let you know when I see it. One of the things to know about this is that Grant County Commission's input would be very timely right now. So if the commission would make an input, it would be, it would have time to be considered right now. I want to move into some other topics, but are there any questions right now on anything I've said so far? Any questions? Yes?
I'm confused about one thing. I've been confused all along about airspace optimization, right? It sounds like a pretty mysterious process how they have to decide the dimensions of the space based on training mission, and you mentioned the one down, it looked like it was near Big Bend, that looked large, but was still apparently not configured for current needs. So that whole thing, I assume, is all based on, on the needs of the jets and the pilots and the training protocols. And then you said, not that many slides ago, that the LOBO MOA is undefined because it needs to be defined during the scoping process. And that appears to me to contradict the first interpretation of how you configure airbase, airspaces. Because how could the public possibly contribute to designing what the Air Force needs to do as training? Can you explain that, create a contradiction?
Yes, I understand that completely. Let me address your first question, which was about the southern airspace, which looks like a red on a large airspace. One of the things to know about that airspace is it was designed specifically for supersonic operations with the AN-15, which was an air superiority fighter. And initially, that fighter was designed to shoot down other aircraft, not bomb the ground, although later it was adapted. But basically, the airspace is designed for supersonic operations, and because that's a small portion of what the F-16s are doing, they really don't want to make use of that airspace. In addition, they consider that pretty far to travel. Again, they're trying to minimize transit time and maximize training time. This is according to what they told me. As far as the scoping process and dealing with LOBOs, it is, that is a rather interesting thing. I think one of the things, and this is why it's important for the Grant County Commission and others to make known what's in this area, is because we need to let the Air Force know what needs to be avoided here. And so, you know, that way they can design the airspace if they're going to actually create that airspace, but design that airspace to eliminate certain things. You know, I think it's really difficult for them to know right now. This is what I've been saying, this is actually what the people at Holloman have been telling me, is that this is the time for public comments, this is the time when the Air Force gets educated about what's here, what needs to be avoided and things like that, so that they can properly scope and design that airspace. So that's why they go through this scoping process with a national airspace, to discover what lies below the airspace, what would need to be avoided. For instance, they hit a couple of ones, you know, which would definitely need to be avoided as a cultural and archaeological site. So that's why, right now, it's still in scoping, and that's why right now they need to figure out what the cutouts would be. I don't think they're clear on that yet, at least from what I understand from what is at Talon. Does that answer your question? Yes. Any other questions?
I have a question. So how many of these pilots that are being trained for F-16s are American, for the American forces, and how many are for foreign forces?
For Holloman, they are all US forces.
Okay.
All, and actually, US Air Force. I was asked a question the other day, I gave, I gave another version of this presentation the other day to the American Legion, for instance, and they were asking all, you know, do they train Navy pilots, and whatever, and the answer is no. The Navy does not fly F-16s. This is specifically for F-16 training, and especially, although there are four classifications of training, but especially initial qualification training, these are brand-new pilots that have just come into the jet, and they're upgrading to, you know, to learn to fly the jet, and actually upgrading so that they can go out to combat missions.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions? Okay, thank you. Obviously, if there are any questions, I'll be glad to stop along the way. But what I'd like to do now is I'd like to move into some other research that I have been doing, and this is a new portion of the presentation that has not been seen before. And so I want to talk about current flying operations over Grant County. And so, as I mentioned earlier, that blue airspace is actually controlled by the Arizona Air National Guard, and specifically Tucson Air National Guard Base, which if you were not aware, is at Tucson Air National Airport. And so there are times when you're flying out of Tucson, and you actually see Air Force F-16s over there, those are Air National Guard assets. And one of the things to know about the Guard is that the Guard reports to the states until such time as the federal government needs to call on their services. So if you remember, for instance, when President Trump called for Guard troops to go to the border, that was a request to the governors to send troops to the borders. It was not actually taking over the Air National Guard for a national purpose. So they respond to the, the actual governors of the states, but they can actually be taking on missions for the Air Force. And in this case, and basically what it does is it keeps them active during other times. So we have the 161st Wing So we have the 161st Wing that's there right now. And when I say "we," we as American citizens, not "we" as me, the Air Force. There is the 161st Wing there, with three squadrons and one training squadron. And basically, there are eight F-16s currently based at the Tucson Air National Guard Base. Their mission is education and flight training of Air National Guard, as well as international Air Force. So Commissioner Williams, this goes back to your question about training international pilots. They are not doing that at Holloman. However, the group over at Tucson is actually training international pilots. You can see there that they have trained F-16 pilots from 25 different countries. This is probably the most prolific aircraft that was ever actually created. It's in many countries around the world now, because it is such an effective aircraft. So they have trained pilots from 45 different countries. You can see some of the countries that are there, and the 10 countries that are in blue are actually still there. So we're talking about the Netherlands, as well as the West, who have aircraft and pilots actually training them. They have another combat mission, which is about intelligence, surveillance, and reconnaissance. That is a secondary mission that only really takes place if they will call up to active service to go into war, and precision attack. So this is the map that they've used. This is a map coming from the Tucson Air National Guard. And as you can see, you remember that those airspaces over the Hila, by the way, let me just speak up here for a minute. So what I'd like to come out to is that you can see the line going up is accordingly going Arizona and New Mexico. And again, the rest point is not really on the screen, so if you see that line, you can see the difference in operations between the two. There's a lot of, a lot of airspaces over in Arizona that the Guard actually uses. However, there is one over the Hila. And you see that hatched area, which takes up part of Reserve and Lawrence, the airspaces that I said earlier, those blue airspaces that are over the Hila and extend into Arizona. Now, it's an airspace that they call Russell, which they actually use over the Hila. So any flying operations that people are experiencing right now with F-16s are from the Tucson Air National Guard and/or their international trainees. And right now, there are actually 2,460 missions that are going on in that Russell airspace. So when you're hearing people talk about F-16s flying over their head, that's, that's what's happening. Now, one of the things to know is that I am actually going to the Tucson Air National Guard Base on Friday to make a visit to their commander there, so you can find out more about the flying operations. I thought, like, you know, reading and researching and things like that, but I have some specific questions I want to ask. And so they are receiving, you know, Friday morning, for some briefings and some questions and answers. So I would like to understand more about these sorties that are actually being flown, and I would also like to give them a little bit of a flavor of what's being experienced, because I want to know what kind of training they're actually supposed to be conducting, and whether those pilots are actually holding to a level of that, that training. So are they flying below the level they're not supposed to be, et cetera, et cetera? So just wanting to understand a little bit more, and also wanting to present the perspective of people who are actually experiencing this, which I've heard a lot about since I've been down on the ground giving this presentation. So that is really a little bit more about what's going on with the Tucson Guard. Again, I should have more information for you on that. And one of the things to also know is that there was just an environmental assessment for the relocation of the Taiwan Air Force, which was at WUF Air Force Base in Phoenix, to the Tucson Air National Guard Base. And there is, in the NIPA process, an environmental assessment, which is just a level below the environmental impact statement. The EA was just released for this, and there are concerns about that EA, because it only addresses one alternative, really one operational alternative, which is just move the Taiwan Air Force from Phoenix down to Tucson. And what they would be doing is that they would be replacing the Iraq Air Force, which is going home, and the Tucson Air Force, which, I mean, the Taiwan Air Force, which would be moving from Phoenix. The thing about the Taiwan Air Force is that they do have more aircraft than Iraq have in their training unit. So the Iraq Air Force is departing, the Taiwan Air Force will be basing their aircraft there, and they will continue to use the same and other airspaces that the Tucson Air National Guard uses. So the total number of sorties will be, for them, here, 6,459, and that brings the total annual sorties up to 31,000 over 31,000. One of the things to know is that the FAA has given permission for 40,000 sorties from the Tucson Air National Guard Base, and so they feel like they're under their cap. The concern is that they may increase flying operations over the Hila. So this is happening, and the Air Force did receive comments on their draft EA, which were due on the 31st of July. I didn't find out about this until a few late in the game, but basically, like, a week before the comments were due, but basically, there are some comments that have been submitted, and the Air Force has to address those. So we'll be hearing more about this move in the, in the future. Also, the reason that these aircraft are moving is because the F-35, which is the newest aircraft in the Air Force inventory, is moving to Phoenix. Also, I want to talk about possible flying operations over Grant County. I'm planning on making a visit to Kirtland Air Force Base, where it was stationed, back in the early to mid-'80s. Going to go back to there and learn a little bit more about this. But I want to just tell you that many people have been asking me questions about the aircraft that are flying over the Bemeres and other areas. And I did some research, and it looks like those aircraft are possibly from Kirtland Air Force Base. The 58th Special Operations Wing is there, plus the 150th Special Operations Wing, which is the Air National Guard Wing. They're working there together to train Air Force Special Operations crews, as well as combat search and rescue aircraft crews. And so people are talking a lot about seeing C-130s, and many different kinds of C-130s are up there, actually, as well as helicopters, which do certain rescue missions, and also the CB-22, which you see there on the right. So if you see those flying over, those are most likely from Albuquerque. And again, I hope to journey out there and find out a little bit more about that as well, so people can understand what's happening over places like the Bemeres. I have not heard that they're flying over here, but I know I have seen helicopters myself, and those are either from Albuquerque or putting them on the fourth list. Questions on anything I've said so far? So in summary, I just want to say that, you know, Holloman's F-16 training is really key to addressing the pilot shortage, and they are going to be doing everything they can to maximize and optimize the airspace that they have, as well as potentially expanding into other areas to make sure that they can do all the training they need. They need to get these pilots trained at the door in a year. This is not why they can really delay, because more pilots are coming in behind them. The NIPA process is ongoing. As I said earlier, it's actually been delayed. The comments are still being accepted, inputs. And so, again, now would be a timely moment for the commission to submit something to the Air Force and have it be considered in the draft that I left. The Tucson Guard is the source of most of the flights currently over the Hila. As I said earlier, Holloman is not, has not started, is not conducting training right now over the Hila. Again, I'm going to the Tucson Air National Guard Base describing, so I hope to give you an update after that. And of course, obviously, future visits to places like Kirtland Air Force Base, as well as Davis-Monthan Air Force Base, will yield more information on what's actually happening. I'm not expecting much from Davis-Monthan, actually. I'm expecting to learn more from Kirtland than Davis-Monthan. And that's it. I just want to really thank you for your time this morning. I can ask if you have any questions for me.
First of all, I want to apologize profusely for our inadequate audiovisual today. I think somebody changed some settings. We tried to fix it, and we're going to have to take it all the way down and back up, and we didn't want to stop you. I think that our, the presentation was still adequate by far. It helped give us a better idea of what really is going on, taking a lot of the emotion out. I also want to thank you so much for your technical support on the resolution I'm going to actually talk about today. And I know there's some, some people want some changes, and we'll try to work through all those and see if we can get a resolution that, as long as the intent isn't changed of the resolution, I think I can work around a lot of things. I think that's all. Thank you very much for, for your time and effort on, on educating us.
Thank you, Commissioner Castor. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the opportunity to consult with you on the resolution, and I'm standing by and catching you the next email.
Thanks.
Just thank you for the efforts you're putting into all this up here. It's taken you a lot of time, and we really do appreciate your information.
You're welcome. You know, I'm really pleased to do this. I feel like I'm in a new position to provide this information, happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Moving on, we'll review the August 16 regular meeting agenda. Manager Webb.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. First item for review is Item D, the August 10, 2018 expenditure report. Linda, our auditors are here this week, so Linda is busy with them. So Randy, could you please go over the highlights of that report?
In your package, you have an expenditure report, period ending August 10, for a total of $2,047,39.42. That comes from accounts payable totaling $1,614,281.88. And payroll, which includes academic incentive and pay periods 15 and 16, totaling $426,457.54. To highlight some of the major expenses that we incurred during this reporting period are to Southwest Concrete and Paving for $15,215. This is concrete for road special projects. Ascend Aviation totaling $19,850, which was a jet fuel purchase under Flight Fifth. Payment to City of Bayard for $12,167. This was maintenance for the North Hurley Lift Station. Reimbursement to the City of Bayard. Caterpillar Financial Services, $11,977. This was for July and August road equipment lease payments. Bohannon Houston for $18,187. This was a progress payment on Task Order Number Six over at the airport. Payment to SNF Inc. for $151,445. This was for a Type 6 wildman vehicle for the Cliff Hiller Volunteer Department. Payment to Hiller Regional Medical Center for $72,670. This was for the June indigent claims, which was approved by the board last month. Payment to High Desert Humane Society for $16,500 for April through June's animal control services. Payment to Juniper Advisory Services for $10,793 for June's retainer fee and services. Payment to the New Mexico County Insurance Authority, $222,513 for the fiscal year workers' contribution. Payment to Summit Food Service, $22,145 for June's in-meat meals and medical snacks. Payment to Tyler Technologies for $56,156 for software renewal. I believe that was for the Treasurers and the Assessor's software. Payment to Ascend Aviation for $21,118. This was a jet fuel purchase on July 30th and the refuel release. Payment to Pitney Bowes, $10,000 for the postage meter refill. And payment to Hidalgo Medical Services for $45,700 for the senior programs contribution for this fiscal year. And that's it. If you have more questions.
Thank you, Randy. Moving on to agreements. Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought I made, I thought that.
Sorry.
It just won, but the workers' comp figure is stunning. My main question, I guess, is whether our risk rating has been improving or not.
Actually, our workers' comp figures are down a little bit. We successfully implemented the first year of RAP, which is the Risk Awareness Program. If we continue that program over the course of years, then we will see a reduction. They will give us a discount if we continue successful implementation of that program. We're working on more training with our safety committee to further awareness, to try and reduce some of those costs.
Yeah, no, that's exactly the kind of measure I was thinking of. So I'm glad we're, we're doing that. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay. Now, we'll move on to agreements. Item E, approve/disapprove agreement, oops, Amendment 1 to Agreement A 1807, an agreement with the State of New Mexico Children, Youth, and Families for the J-JAC Continuum and Compliance Monitoring. This is an amendment to our, the original agreement that you approved a few months back. This is a result of the position that was vacated from Bianca Padilla when she left back in February. And so CYFD is not going to fill that position as it stood. It was, she served as a JPO and J-JAC Continuum Coordinator. They're not going to fill that position. So in order to be able to be in compliance with our grant agreement, I requested an amendment. I was eligible to request 20% increase to the original grant amount, and that will allow us to either hire or contact with an individual to fulfill the duties of that J-JAC Continuum Coordinator. So they actually moved very timely upon our request and got this to, to us in a very timely fashion. So I would encourage approval of this, so we can move forward with that program and not have it stagnant any longer than, than possible. So I included some information in an email to you. Do you guys have any further questions on that?
Just have a clarification. So what we're doing is just fulfilling the J-JAC piece of it. What happens with her JPO position is up to JPO, right?
Yes, that is the, right. That's, that's the state issue. The actual district supervisor will work with the state, and they will more than likely fill that with just a JPO position. Any further questions? No? Moving on, Item F, approve/disapprove professional services agreement between Grant County Juvenile Accreditation Office and the following contractors. Agreement A 1823, Gary Staley, and Agreement A 1824, James Graham. Actually, I need to double-check on the title of that. So this, this, these agreements correlate with the previous grant agreement amendment. So our subcontracts with these individuals who facilitate the programs that are within that J-JAC agreement, they reference oversight from the JPO's office. So the state CYFD office said you need to remove any reference to JPO in your subcontract. So that's the reason for these amendments, as we, we made those corrections, removed any reference to JPO, and it gives county oversight of those programs, since the grant, the grant is between us and CYFD. So remove all reference to JPO is basically all those amendments are. Moving on to Item G, approve/disapprove Agreement A 1821, bargaining unit contract. I need to request to remove, remove this from the agenda and place it on the September agenda. Okay.
I thought we were very close.
Yeah, I thought we were, too.
Well, I thought we were close a year ago. So we're now at 13 months into this. I met with him yesterday. It's back in the Union Member's Towns, and I hope to hear from him very soon. I'll be following up with him to make sure that we can move forward with ratification in September.
So we're going to expect a Union Member's Towns. You mean to schedule a ratification?
So, so we're still negotiating some terms that they've come back, that they were not in favor of, and so we're still in, basically, in those negotiations. So I counter some of their requests, and so now it's back in their hands. So hopefully, we'll see ratification on their behalf, and then I can bring it back to you for, for your approval.
The amount of the call that we discussed last month, that was not an issue as far as your discussion was.
Yes, it was yesterday. It has to be, that call has to be negotiated, either via the EMO or the contract.
Was there an effort to obtain a different level of call?
No, sir.
That's what I meant, that.
Okay. No. So we'll move back to September. The same with the following. Item H, approve/disapprove Agreement A 1822, Special Management Inmates Policy and Procedures to- Management Immates Policy and Procedures to Process and Meet Correspondents, Publications and Packages. Uh, we need to do, um, the detention staff needs to do some further review and clarification. I included some information as to why we are, um, being requested to amend our policy. There's been several lawsuits against counties in the manner in which they handle, um, inmate, inmate mail and correspondence. And so we want to make sure that we are in compliance with our policy and we do not become one of those counties that is subject to litigation. So we are working on that policy, um, not quite there yet, so, um, we will remove that and, um, address that in September. Questions?
Did you have a question? Let me see.
I did. Um, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So going back to the bargaining unit contract.
I apologize.
Um, that's okay. Um, wasn't that, had they not agreed to that and then they came back and changed their minds about, um, issues on that?
There's been a lot of back and forth.
But this just happened in July, right? We thought we had an agreement and then we didn't?
Correct.
What I'll explain is they went back to the membership and they didn't agree with them.
Correct. Well, you're right, the members, it's not one individual, it's the members still.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Um, moving on to resolutions. Approved, disapproved resolution R 1823, authorizing the purchase of five lots in Hachita from Western New Mexico University for Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department. This, uh, resolution, um, allows Tyrone VFD to purchase these lots. They were, um, appraised at fair market value, so we're in compliance with, um, state purchasing. And this is to construct a fire station in Hachita. Any questions?
I have one, just to explain why and there's nothing else. I had the impression from like maybe 10 years ago or something, uh, that that area was served with some kind of an intercounty agreement, uh, that, I don't remember if it was Luna or Hidalgo was providing services to that part of Grant County. Is that not the case?
I'm not aware of that, but that was long before my time here. I don't know if Randy knows anything about, any such a thing.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, at one time it was, it was, um, the services were supplied by, uh, Hidalgo County with the purpose of, the plies was up at that time.
Uh-huh.
Um, and at that time, that's when I, I believe that, uh, um, they were providing the service once plies closed down.
Uh-huh.
Hachita was gonna have to, that the area was gonna have to be serviced by Grant County and at that time, uh, they asked, uh, the county if they would take over the Hachita Fire Department. We had a structure out there at the time. Uh, it is no longer, it's been raised. We are leasing the property from the State of New Mexico, the DOT, uh, to house our equipment. So we do have services out there now, uh, that provide, uh, fire and emergency service to the residents of Hachita.
Okay. It's your, is it your impression that this is the most efficient way to provide those services to that area?
Yes.
Okay.
For the fact, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Brown, I, I think because they are so far down there, the services, yes, we, we don't have a mutual aid agreement at this time with Hidalgo County, uh, even though if they needed help, then we would come, Tyrone. Um, working with the State Fire Marshal's Office, they also believe that Hachita really needs to be out on their own as a fire department, uh, but, you know, finances and so forth and so on, they are under Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department. So, um, you know, we're working on the other side. We do have a mutual aid agreement with Luna County. Um, so on both sides of that, uh, we still have the services, but they, they knew, we had a meeting out there, I don't remember who that was, Jimisha, with the community and, and they're definitely wanting emergency services out there. And so we're moving forward to try to provide, uh, something that our residents need in Grant County when it comes to, we, there's times that because of the, of the type of terrain out there, we do get a lot of wildland fires and we do get a lot of accidents on I-10 that are in between, uh, Luna County and, and Hidalgo County that we have to provide that service for.
Okay. Thanks, Randy.
Is there gonna be enough people to man the fire station there?
At this time, yes, we have, we have enough members, which the State Fire Marshal requires 12, and I think we have, uh, membership of about 13 to 14.
And are they certified as needed to be by law?
Certified as far as firefighting, uh, they don't have to firefight one or two, but we are doing the training with them. Uh, they are certified in medical, first responders, um, and that is to the State of New Mexico. So as far as medical, yes. Uh, as far as firefighting, we're working on those, um, areas of training. Thanks.
Randy, say something.
Yeah. Chairman, Commissioner Brown. I was just gonna mention that, uh, when we had the meeting down there, that was one of the discussions was membership and since we had the meeting, we have had two new members that have signed up, um, so that is recent numbers. Just wanted to point that out. That was just something from Chief Girls, if you wanted to make sure that I pointed out today.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna make, I just wanted to make sure that we had enough volunteers and, and before we go out and build a really nice place and, and not have people to service the area and have to close it down, so. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, we'll make sure that we do our due diligence on our end to make sure that, um, we have all, um, measures in place before we proceed, um, with any construction of any more fire stations. Um, next, item J, approved, disapproved resolution R 1824, adopting an infrastructure capital improvement plan for Grant County. Misha sent this, uh, for your review ahead of time and also included in your packet. I just wanted to provide a little bit explanation of, um, behind our reasoning for, um, the, uh, the, uh, order. Um, number one on the list is Public Safety Vehicle Replacement Program. This would be, uh, vehicles for the Sheriff's Department. Number two is the administration building parking lot. Uh, number three is the administration building roof. Number four, airport runway construction and, uh, five, airport terminal building. So the reason that these are in this particular order is due to, um, this provides a tool for the staff, um, for, um, many different funding opportunities. So in order to be eligible for any legislative capital outlay, um, those projects have to be in the top three on your ICIP. So we tried to identify projects that were small enough that we have been successful in getting either funding for in the past or projects that were small enough if, um, we were fortunate enough to receive legislative capital outlay funding that we could pair that with either local funding sources or, um, another funding source to make sure that we could, um, that these projects could actually come to fruition. So we, for instance, we didn't wanna put, you know, a $5 million project in our top three, um, and then go to the legislature and ask for money when we would get, you know, a very, very, um, small percentage of that, or they wouldn't choose not to fund that at all because it's not feasible for the amount of money that might be available. So that's the reason for the top three being there is because, um, we've identified those as, um, as needs, um, the public safety vehicles as a recurring need. We have been able to, um, pair that with, um, local general funds, um, um, to match the legislative funds in the past. Um, that's, that's the goal, um, next year. And then as far as the parking lot and the roof, these are both needs. Um, we've had several accidents in the parking lot from, um, not only employees, but, um, citizens following, um, twisting angles. So it needs to be corrected and then the roof for this building needs to be, um, completely, uh, redone. The airport, um, projects, those we need to have, um, in the, um, top, um, the top portion of our ICIP in order to make sure that we continue to draw attention to, um, potential, um, FAA funding that might come available, um, so that we can, um, continue those discussions regarding, um, construction of a new runway. And we're, um, continuing to explore different, um, optional, options for the airport terminal. So, um, although I know this may not make a lot of sense to you when you look at this, however, we are trying to, um, put together a tool that is most beneficial to explore, um, funding sources. So that's our, that's our reasoning for presenting it to you, um, in this manner. So I would stand for questions.
I, I don't have a question. I just like to make a comment. I really would like to see us complete the front of this building one of these days. I mean, it's been, it's been the way you see it now for, I don't know how long now. So this building has, was completed, I believe, back in about 18 years ago.
And we put sidewalks on it probably four?
Yeah. And, and we did put the sidewalks and the platform in the front, but I think that's just a portion of what we actually wanted and I think we need to get that done as soon as possible. I know I've been here, this is my eighth year and we've been wanting to do this for the whole eight years we've been here, but, uh, and I understand there's priorities and this hasn't been a priority, or a complete priority, but we need to do something with it, being identified as our county scene.
That's actually something we've identified as we're looking at projects, um, for the bonds is, uh, in, is including, um, the stucco of this building in conjunction with the roof. Um, so the roof being on here, that's the number one priority because it is in bad shape. Um, but if we can combine those, so, you know, there could be a potential, for instance, to, to, um, to bring this, this building up to the standard it needs to be. It could be a combination of legislative capital outlay bonds or, um, we just need to, um, find money in our general fund to start taking care of, of things. So that's, um, we have, we have discussed that and yes, that is our goal to, uh, to try and get the front of the building. Actually, the whole building needs to be redone, so.
Thank you.
I have a question about the courthouse roof. It has slipped, and I understand, I'm pretty logic about ordering this. Is it the case that the, uh, liability to the property from, uh, this administration roof is greater than that of the courthouse?
No, sir. The reason that I was down on the list is, um, whenever, uh, the commission back in 2014 enacted the whole harmless gross receipts tucks and then bonded against that, they bonded for three projects, Tucasa, the courthouse and, um, uh, the convention center. And so, um.
So that's good.
We were, now that we have, we're waiting on a few reimbursements on Tucasa and we have some money sunset out of that to, um, complete the roof on the courthouse. That's why that slipped down. It's, it's nothing and, um, as you, um, stated, it's just a matter of we have funding for that, therefore it's not a high priority on, on this particular list.
Perfect. Thanks.
Any more questions? I thoroughly confused you.
And one of the things, just to add to, one of the things that you have to do on the, the top three is they have to be in, in the quantity of dollars that you could potentially use as a capital outlay for. You can't put a, a $2 million project in there because you're not gonna get $2 million of capital outlay. And all three of these, I mean, if, if the state's really flush, you might as well pick up that $393. More than likely, what you're gonna get is the $232. If things aren't as good as you thought, maybe you can get the $120. So that's, I think that's, that's really smart, the way she laid that out for you. You got three, if there's money, you get the building. If there's not, you get the one to go on.
Thanks, makes sense.
That was the intent. Item K, approved, disapproved resolution R 1825, adoption required community development block grant, otherwise out of CDBG, annual certifications and commitments. This is an annual resolution we have to do every year to be in compliance to apply for CDBG funds.
Questions?
No.
I made that room 20 years ago.
Item L, approved, disapproved resolution R 1826, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a colonias infrastructure project fund loan slash grant agreement by and among the New Mexico Colonias Infrastructure Board, the New Mexico Finance Authority and Grant County, New Mexico for the purposes of financing the cost of Rosedale Road Phase Two reconstruction and safety improvements in the amount of, it should say, $1,078,810. I explained to you in my email that, um, just so that you have a little bit better understanding, that, um, a few years back, the colonias board, um, changed up the way that they funded. It's a grant loan combination. Um, we're required to borrow 10% at 0% interest in order to get the loan. We back that up with a TRT. Um, we can, um, use a local, um, local match, which we utilize road department labor and equipment to make that local match for projects like this. And this will complete Phase Two of the, uh, Rosedale Road. Any questions on that? No? Item M, approved, disapproved resolution R 1827, a resolution requesting the New Mexico State Transportation Commission to designate certain specific portions of the state highway system as a designated ROV route. I'm gonna let Misha explain this one.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner. Um, this is the, uh, the letter that you guys, uh, approved at the last meeting to, uh, Secretary Church. Um, the counsel for the State Transportation Commission, uh, working with District One and myself, pointed out that CP 71 says it must be in resolution form. Um, they have done like Red River in the past where they didn't do it and they're trying to clean those up and, and they have Red River and now Tous doing, um, resolutions also to clean that up. So they just brought it back and said, hey, before you present to, um, the commission in September, which is what I plan to do, um, it needs to be in a resolution. So it's, it's the letter just put into a resolution form with the letter attached. And the only thing that they asked me to change on it was, uh, the word approximate for the mile markers. They wanted it to say mile marker X and that's where we're gonna put the sign. So, uh, very minor, um, vocabulary change there. Any questions?
Thanks.
Moving on, item N, approved, disapproved resolution R 1828, Grant County response to Air Force airspace expansion over the Hila for Holloman Air Force Base F-16 training. Uh, you have a, um, a resolution that Commissioner Caston provided that was sent out under separate cover for your review, also included in your packets. In addition to that, Commissioner Billings has authored some amendments to that resolution that was also included in your novice packet for your review. And I will turn that over to Commissioner Caston and Commissioner Billings for further discussion.
Let me go first?
Okay.
Yeah, um, once again, uh, thanks to Colonel Beck for helping me because there's no way I'm smart enough to know all the information in this, this, um, resolution. But my intent was, and, and like I said earlier today, is, um, so long as the intent of the resolution doesn't get changed, I will, I will gladly accept friendly amendments, ideas. But what my, my intention was, was to point out to the, to the, uh, force service, Air Force, um, the potential pitfalls that they could be getting in, uh, asking for this change on these, on these airspace. So I just kinda gave them a laundry list of, of things that they need to, to look at. Be cognate that there's things out there that we don't want them flying over, cliff dwellings, uh, area, you know, we don't want fires. I don't want my horses run through the fences, um, obviously in, in, uh, high density, uh, urban areas and even high density, uh, rural areas, we don't want a lot of noise. Now, that being said, I feel as though that they don't really want to use this airspace. So I gave them all the reasons not to, but at the end I said, you know, if you truly believe this is a, um, national security situation, we're not going, you know, we're, then go ahead and use it. But I think once they see all the pitfalls, that they'll probably use the other areas. I think they already wanna use the areas, uh, the other areas, and I think this gives them a reason to use the other areas. I'm not a big fan of just saying, sending in a resolution saying, we don't want you to do anything at all here. I think that falls on deaf ears. Um, that's, that's one comment. I think we gave them plenty of information in here. If they do their due diligence, I believe they will go to the other areas. That's what my intent was.
Thanks, and I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Caston getting with Colonel Beck, bringing, and you coming here today and giving us the information because it's, uh, really taught me, I mean, I think it's been useful for all of us, so I appreciate that. I do have a question for you, Colonel. Are you on anyone's payroll or are you doing this as a volunteer?
Thank you for that question.
Thank you for that question, I should address that in the beginning of my presentation. I am a citizen of Grant County since fall of 2016, and one of the things that happened to me was I started hearing a lot of misconceptions and concerns and things like that, people had a lot of questions about what was actually going on, not a lot of people really understand the Air Force and what they're doing, and so I felt compelled personally to take this on. So I got off the couch and started doing some research on my own, I am not on anybody's payroll, I am not representing the Air Force, I am totally representing myself as a retired Air Force Colonel.
I agree. I appreciate it.
Yes.
And I just, I actually felt that that was a fact, I just wanted to bring it to attention, so we, we really appreciate your, your efforts in bringing to light what, what is the true information as, as far as, and your research where you're traveling to the bases and bases and being able to communicate and then bringing that information back to the community, it's really thoughtful, and we're really thankful for that.
Yes, thank you, I'm really glad to be doing it, and they are receiving me well so far, and, you know, as I would expect for a veteran, you know, usually you're received well at a base. So I, I'm trying to set up good relationships with them, and also, one of the things I did not mention or didn't highlight on the slide, it was there, is that we will be receiving another meeting with the Air Force after the draft, the IAS comes out, we'll have 45 days to comment on that, and we will be receiving another meeting, and I intend to work with the Air Force on that meeting so that it is a productive meeting rather than something that devolves into something that is not productive, so that's my hope.
That'd be most appreciated, thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Our first meeting with them was, yeah, a little chaotic.
Yes, and unfortunately, I was not able to be either at the November meeting or the April meeting, but I do have contacts now with them at home and in other places, I think I can prevent that, or help prevent that in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So my last comment was, I appreciate what she said about us needing to tell them what is needed here.
Yes.
And in my, I don't know if you could call them amendments to Mr., what Mr. Caston wrote, but basically, I shortened it from a four-page document to a two-page. I think Mr. Caston is right that what's really important is the very last paragraph. I changed the word, I'll go ahead and read this, because it's pretty short. It says, "Now therefore be resolved that unless the Air Force deems alternative two as," and his word was "critical" to national security, I changed that word to "essential", I'm more comfortable with that. And then there's several areas that, that I think personally, and I'm not speaking for the commission, this is of course up to, to your debate, it's just my feeling. I think that we need to look out for the wilderness areas, the rural forest areas, and as Mr. Caston said, the populated rural areas, which would be the Cliff Dwellings area, the Members Valley, the Hila Cliff area, and I think they need to, and Mule Creek, and there's others. And I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, that we need to let them know because they're, they are in Washington DC, I thought this was going on over in Hollywood, it's clear over in Washington.
Yes.
So, so they need to know what our concerns are here.
Yes, that's very true, and I've been encouraging everyone as I travel around, and I was also encouraged by the folks at home on Air Force Base to educate the Air Force now is the time. I mean, I know when I sat in the Pentagon, I didn't know anything about, you know, this area, in fact, when I was stationed in Kirkland, I didn't even know that Silver City existed. So there are people who don't know anything about this area, it looks like a big open area on the map, you know, a big forested area, no one knows what's really underneath all that, including dwellings in the forest and, you know, things like that. So now is the time to educate the Air Force as much as possible so that if they were to create that low-ho airspace, they would know what to avoid, and it's important, I think, for the commission to bring that to their attention.
Okay, well, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments?
Go ahead. I don't need to go right away. No, I guess I wanted to express a number of things. One is my great appreciation that you all have taken time to, to draft our resolutions, you know that I was very interested in seeing something like this happen back in the spring, and I'm really glad that we've come around to where we're, where we're looking at some real possibilities of getting a resolution. So thank you for that. I think that the Air Force has got thousands of pages to read, they're really good at reading lots of pages, and four instead of two isn't a problem, on the contrary, I think if our purpose is to inform them, I really like the extra detail that's in Commissioner Caston's version, just to let you know that that's what I'm looking at. I agree that the last paragraph really is the most important, although I like a lot of what's in, what's in the before the last paragraph, and again, I have preference for Commissioner Caston's last paragraph, you all probably know I would be stronger in several ways.
There's no doubt, Commissioner Beck, I'll interrupt you, but I realize that I had a dichotomy here, and I was trying to write kind of in the middle.
And I appreciate that.
And trying to get, trying to get unanimous, trying to reach across and, and work with everybody to get something that we might be able to get unanimous.
I think we might, and, and it's easy for me to say that about yours, so I'm just letting folks know since we're discussing that that's the case. I think there are two areas that come earlier, where there's significant disagreement that I'll bring up on Thursday, because basically, I want my constituents to know how I feel. I disagree completely with the idea that there will be a substantial positive economic impact for the state of New Mexico from the expansion of training at 16 at Holloman, I think that's an old way of thinking economics, I think it's incorrect. And I also disagree that we're experiencing a severe pilot shortage, we have 5,700 aircraft in our Air Force, second largest aircraft in the world is the Navy with 3,700 aircraft, well behind the Navy with only 1,700 aircraft is the Soviet Union, I'm sorry, Russia now, they got most of the Soviet Union's aircraft, and those are Soviet-era airplanes, for the most part, the majority of them. We have massive dominance of airspace around the world, much more than we need for our national security. I do not believe this training is crucial for national security, which brings me to the final paragraph, I don't expect to win this, but asking or depending on the Air Force to determine whether something that it wants is crucial to national security is like asking my member child to decide if a chutsey roll has good nutritional value before he can eat it. He will, I guarantee you, tell me that it has good nutritional value.
They do.
And I'd feel the same way about you. So I'll probably repeat that on Thursday, I like that one.
You like that one?
Hopefully, we'll take it out of the, the last paragraph, but if not, I'll still support it because I really want to see a unanimous resolution. So thank you.
At first, I really liked the resolution, thank you very much for taking the time to do this, but I did have a question. It says, "Whereas Grant County acknowledges of support, this expansion of training has received from the New Mexico Federal Delegation and Governor," does our federal delegation still support this? Because during the election, I heard a couple of them say that they did not support it, and if they really did support it in Washington, this needs to be known, because we don't need wishy-washy people telling us that they believe in something and turn around and tell us that they don't. So just because it's election time.
You can show me where somebody has actually said something negative, because everything I've read is showing that they want that $51 billion.
Exactly.
To come to New Mexico rather than somewhere else.
And I'm in the same boat that you are when it comes to that, and I think that's where the economic impact comes, and I think that's what you're referring to, and I like that, and I think it needs to be in there, because that kind of money will never come to the state otherwise. But I do like the way it was written, and I did just want to verify that the delegation is really still behind it.
And if we thought some information was showing differently, I would be happy to remove that.
Because that's what we were told when we met with the governor.
I'm not implying about something, but that's, that was my perception.
Commissioner Wallace, if I could clarify, your question is whether they support the training wing at home, or whether they support over flights over the Hila?
It states here.
Well, and I, and I, I meant, my intent, and maybe I need to change it to where that's not a question, that they support.
Expansion.
The expansion.
Yeah, I took it that way, exactly.
Yeah.
And that's what you're asking about as well.
Exactly.
Right. Thank you for that clarification.
Because I think that means a lot to us to know if they really do support this or not.
Commissioner, I would also make a comment, just one more thing, your change of the word "critical" to "essential" is, that means something to the Air Force. Critical has a different connotation to the Air Force defense critical, or whatever it been, just essential. Essential is kind of a lower level of consideration. This is essential, you know, flying, doing this flying training is considered essential, the question is, is it defense critical here? And so I just offer that clarification.
No, and that does the change, it may not fly with this commission, but...
Yes, that's why the initial word was "critical," I think.
Okay.
So are you saying that, that "critical" is a higher level?
Yes.
So what you've done is exactly opposite of what you wanted to do, I think.
Oh, no, no, that's a little bit, no.
Yeah, so just wanting you to know that, you know, when they see "defense critical" or "critical," "critical" to the Air Force, that's a higher level.
Yeah, from your explanation, no, that word, that was very deliberate, and from your explanation this morning, I think I understood that there's 40,000 sorties out of Tucson now.
In other words, no, there's about 31,700 sorties right now.
So there's a potential for 40,000?
There's a potential for 40,000, which would increase the portion over the Hila, and that's spread all over those airspaces that I showed you for the Tucson Guard.
Okay, well, just, what I'm thinking of is there's a potential for 40,000 there, we already know what's flying over the Hila, there's a potential for 10,000 a little bit more over Holloman.
Yes.
Is a little bit, I guess it's about the same distance, would that be fair to say?
So, yes, from some airspaces, yes.
Okay.
Yes, from some of the airspaces, it would be about the same.
So I'm thinking, we're going to have what, and this is really rough, but I'm thinking more or less, we're going to have what we have now, plus about, what, 20% more of that?
It could be anywhere between 20% and 100% of those sorties, it depends on where they intend to use. I mean, if they don't revise the town airspace, then that would force more flights over here if they created one of those.
Okay, so my thinking wasn't rational, then it could be anywhere.
Could be, yes, it could be, and from the Tucson National Guard standpoint, you know, they're already flying about 2,500 sorties over the Hila right now per year, and then if you added the 10,000 plus from home, then that would be a lot.
That would be saying that 100% of them came to this area.
They were evaluating in the IAS as 100%, yeah, and that's the way they have to evaluate it. So in other words, they evaluated us all or not.
So they evaluate when we know that they're, because of the expense of the distance, 100% aren't going to be over.
Exactly, yes, we just don't know what the proportion would be.
Okay.
Right.
Colonel Beck, would it be beneficial to you if we were to designate you as our representative to gather information? Would it help you in any way?
It probably would, I mean, I, I've sort of already informally been telling people that I'm advising you, and that I'm also advising the town council because I have presented to them as well. There's still nothing formal, obviously, but I am telling them, advising you as well as other groups and people here in the local area. For instance, I'm meeting with the backcountry enforcement, they want to make some input tomorrow, and so, you know, I have been offering my support to groups for making sure they have clarity and clarity as to...
Because I personally think you're doing a great job, and I really do appreciate the information you're bringing to us.
Thank you, I'm, I'm willing to take whatever designation you like to give me.
I do want to point out, Commissioner, that, that Colonel Beck was not the person that put the, the federal delegation and stuff in there. We're using her for technical stuff, not for any political stuff whatsoever, and she doesn't mean a political connotation, as she's going out to these bases thinking she's leaning one way or the other. She was very upfront in the beginning and said, "I'm not trying to tell you to have flights or not have flights, I'm going to give you the best information I can possibly give you so you can, can put it together."
Exactly, and I'm, you're advocating, educating the Air Force, also, I want you to know that I do have a meeting set up with Senator Udall's office in Las Cruces, and I was requested to meet with Senator Heinrich's office, but his staffer that handles these issues is having a medical team right now, so I'm still waiting to meet with him, but I am actually meeting with Udall's staffer at the end of the month, and also trying to get ahold of Pierce, Representative Pierce, of course, I understand he's campaigning, and so it might be important also, since he's had some involvement with this, to get him some additional information. Again, just as a consultation.
Okay, thanks. Any further questions, comments?
So I would just like to also offer my support for Commissioner Caston's version of this with, with some additional clarification of the federal delegation pieces, and I am also in favor of the final paragraph on Mr. Caston's version. I think it's, I think especially given Colonel Beck's comments about the importance of educating the Air Force on our issues in our area, I think the detail is really important, and I would like to think that perhaps the fact that, you know, if they have oodles and oodles of things to read, that the fact that there is detail in our resolution might carry some weight. And then just a minor other thing, and the third, whereas in both versions, Air Force is not spelled correctly.
Things bill check.
Also, another thing too, if I could just interject, what's really going to hold weight or carry weight with the Air Force is the fact that it came from the Grant County Commission. You know, yes, they receive lots of public comments and things like that, but when the commission steps up and sends them in, that, that really does carry weight, and they would be expecting to hear from you. So that's what I was trying to say about the details, because of that, I think the detail is important.
Would the commission be against drafting something, but ask her being or designee?
I don't want to.
You mean a formal letter?
She's offered to accept whatever we say, but I do wonder if, if that would change in some negative way, actually, how, if you receive, operating as a private citizen retired from the Air Force maybe gives a little more flexibility than actually being a formally designated representative.
That's a good theory.
Yeah, I'm going to think about it.
Concern could be some lack of connotation.
Not really, as I said, I've been sort of informally letting people know I'm advising you, so whatever you feel is appropriate is fine with me, I, I am here to work with you if needed, and also with Grant, with the Silver City Town Council. Another thing too is that I've actually been to Baird recently to address them, to the town council, so, you know, I am sort of traveling around as an advisor. So as you, as you wish.
Very well appreciated, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks again. Any further comments then on the, that resolution? Okay.
I'm just going to say, I meant to thank everybody for their hard work on this, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, business proposals.
Item A, award reject contract for the bidding for, whoa, we'll clean this up. Award reject contract for the bid for asphalt surface on Cottage Town Road, bid B 1902. The recommendation is to award to Southwest Concrete and Paving. Would you briefly explain what it is this project consists of for them, please?
Chairman, Commissioner, there's going to be a two-inch overlay on Cottage Town Road, this is a LGF project, fortunately, they awarded us a lot more money this year than they have in the past, and that stretch of road that I want to do is still in pretty good shape, where it would handle an overlay without a complete reconstruction on it.
Would it be the same width it is now?
Yes, sir. It'd be 23, it averages 23, 24 foot all the way through it.
Okay, it averages 23 to 24?
Yes, sir.
And what's typical length of the base, the ideal, right?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll widen it out as far as we can.
Yeah.
What's the area following Cottage Town?
Uh, we'll start there. handle an overlay without a complete reconstruction on it.
Would it be the same width it is now?
Yes, sir. It'd be 23, it averages 23, 24 foot all the way through it.
Okay. It averages 23 to 24?
Yes, sir.
And what's the length of the base? The ideal, right?
Yeah. I mean, we'll widen it out as far as we can.
What's the area following Cottistown?
We'll start there at the city limit signs, and we'll go up there about a mile and a quarter. It'll take us up there around that silver nickel trailer park, up in that area there.
And?
No, thank you. I'm trying to picture that.
Two, you split that.
Right? You got one side of it?
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Moving on to, uh...
We probably ought to do one in our district instead of that.
Health, healthcare claims approved as approved July 2018, health plan claims in the amount of $43,050.5. There are five claims to Hila Regional Medical Center in the amount of $42,341.05, and one claim to Hila Regional Medical Center ambulance in the amount of $709. Questions, concerns?
Concerns.
And that concludes the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so that was the end for county reports. Mr. Carrion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of my report for this reporting period. Item number one is detention facility update. Detention currently has eight vacancies. We have one newly hired applicant who's currently in training, and there are currently four applicants participating in the hiring process. Three of those have already completed, successfully completed their backgrounds, who are anticipating an offer for those applicants. Item number two in our training update, Sergeant Galindo's monthly training report. He conducted the required training hours for a newly hired officer. Sergeant Galindo's completed OC refresher training for four officers, training in the area of identifying controlling contrabanders provided to the medical staff. All the fire extinguishers were checked. Flight transports were conducted to District Court and also to the Dona Anna County Detention Center. And currently, what we're participating in is an ARCAN training, and it's being conducted for all officers. And what we anticipate doing is bringing the train, the trainer, to Grant County, and we're going to provide this training for all law enforcement agencies and also any county agencies that would like to participate. And once we get that scheduled, we'll give that information out. In fact, we've already put a flyer out, so we're just waiting for that, to have the trainer, train the trainer, come down and do that training. Item number three on our inmate intervention project, the Tucasa Advisory Committee event on August the 9th. Item number four on our community report, I met with, again, I met again with the Blue Cross Blue Shield Representative, Mrs. Gregory. And what we discussed was improving the Medicaid eligibility for inmates at the detention center, and we briefly discussed some of the changes in the Medicaid that have come about. I also asked her if she would consider participating in doing a presentation at the detention affiliate meeting, because I think some of the detention officers would really appreciate the information that she's going to provide as far as the changes in the Medicaid benefits for inmates particularly. So, we're going to try and get that scheduled. On our item number five on our awards program, we're awaiting nominations. Item number six on our statistics, Grant County Detention Facility average daily population for August 10th of 76, 12 less than last reporting period. High population males is 61, four less than last reporting period. High population females is 15, eight less than last reporting period. Currently, for August 10th, there were 75 inmates. It was eight less than last month booked into the facility. You have your CGI 5 report. Item number seven on the monthly arrest totals for July 2018, Silver City Police Department, 78, Grant County, 29, New Mexico State Police, 14, Bayard Police, 22, Santa Clara had two, and that was all the arrests that were made by the agencies. We have one inmate being held for another facility, and that's at Dingle County. Item number nine on our detention facility transports, probation warrants, and special management statistics. 29 District Court transports, Division One magistrate court had 17, magistrate court division two had two. That's all the court transports that we have for this reporting period. Medical transport during this reporting period totaled eight, so the total number of transports equals 56 as compared to 78 last month. There was a decrease in medical transport during this reporting period, and also a decrease in magistrate court division one, which contributes to the decrease in the transports. Probation violations are 35. We have one parole violation. Inmates awaiting transport to a sentence facility or rehab. Right now, currently, we have three that are waiting. Total number of inmates charged with warrants is 60, and the total number of special inmates on August 10th, total seven. My report, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner, Mr. Marleau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you probably aware, we've been working on a few flood damaged roads, nothing real, real severe. The blade operators have been jumping all over the place. It's, they're about caught up where they can get back in their routine now. We've been trying to get a day or two patching done a week to try and get caught up with some potholes. We are currently working up there on Joseph Blaine Road with this year's LGRF program, trying to, trying to get that road capped. That's the last project we've got for the year for the LGRF. Other than that, it's pretty much business as usual.
I would just like to say thanks to Earl and his Road Department for standing on top of the plumbing tank road issue. Thanks, Earl.
With that bomb coming up, if residents talk to y'all, that would be a good place to go up there and have them look at those dirt roads and see what the difference is from what it was to what it is, what we're working on right now.
Can we just, one more time, how many roads do you have?
How many roads?
How many miles of?
About 700.
Okay, I quoted that figure the other day, and somebody laughed at me, so I want to check.
No, it's way too high, yeah, 700 miles.
Mr. Beattie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll start real quick with the airport. Now that the so-called fire season from a Forest Service standpoint is, is not as, as great as far as the, what the severity is of the Forest Services, we have no planes over there at this point. But I do want to thank Rebecca and the staff over there really did a good job. From June of 17 to July, we sold 192,000 gallons of Jet A fuel. On the low lead side, we sold around 8,700. On the Jet A side, about 139,000 was commercial, 52,000 was others, which includes private jets, the military, and that's basically it. So, we did really good out there. Again, it wasn't a big fire season for this area, but we were able to, to maintain the fuel services for the Forest Service. We did have an after-action review with them to see what we can do better as we get into next year. Again, this was, in their terms, not a big fire season, so it could be a lot more hectic next year. It was pretty dry out there, so just want to let you know about that. The maintenance side, the guys are working really hard, but Tom Park is running smooth. I want to thank Kevin and the manager's office for taking over the bookings and stuff. I think it's running a lot smoother. We've continued to let people know that it's a walking park. They're heeding that, that message, and so it's all working out great. So, I do want to thank Kevin for what he's been doing out there and making sure that people are following the rules that we set forward or that the Commission has in the resolution. We had some flooding over at the courthouse underneath with the rains and some of the sewage problems. We worked with the city to mitigate that and get that all cleaned up. Had some water heaters go down at the airport and pilot's lounge and in the, in the, what am I saying? In the terminal. And so, we had that, that fixed as well. So, the maintenance guys are working really hard, too, to keep the parks clean and, and making sure our buildings are being looked at extensively as we get into the winter time. On the fireside, as you know, it is wet out there, but it's not wet in all places. We had a fire over by in Baird, Whiskey Creek District, behind the water tanks. We also had another fire just last week south of Highway 90. So, I want to thank all the volunteer fire departments for working together to get those out and making sure no one was hurt and no structures were at risk at all. We did, I did receive a wildfire risk reduction grant for $10,000 with a match of $1,000. So, I am working with some of the communities. Our first meeting is going to be September 29th, and we're working to see how we get together with the Forest Service, State Forest and Grant County Fire, along with, you know, South Coast Volunteer Fire Department, to start this, this program off, kick it off, and make sure we have a good one. Once the flyer is final, then I will definitely send it out to the Commission. We'll probably have it on our webpage as well to let people know that we're moving forward to try to educate people in wildland fire and urban interface. Other than that, that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Keep your, your answer. Maybe start with, because it's airport related. If we've read something in the VAP on the essential list of the country.
I haven't heard anything. I've sent a couple of things in, and I've heard nothing back, which usually they respond immediately to. So, maybe they're saturated with information from me at least.
Well, I've been hearing things.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Marleau?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Sanaria Fire Station, the punch list is complete. So, we've finalized the final payment for that. So, the building is, is complete. The asset management plan, we're still working to add some critical items. It is a kind of a slow process. We've got another couple of weeks to gather the data, so we're still working diligently. Daniel is, is working for TENS currently and has been for about six weeks trying to get all that data that we need for the plan. Rosedale Road, as soon as the resolution that we have on the agenda gets approved, then that allows the manager's office to move forward with the grant agreement, and that's going to push us closer to being able to go out to bid for that project. The Whiskey Creek Fire Department addition, the bid documents are ready, so we should be going out to bid on that here pretty quick. I want to talk about the Fort Baird Volunteer Fire Department addition. This is just some info to you guys. We're trying something a little bit different. Randy, Randy and I have met with a company called Facility Build. Currently, if we use an architect, they, they charge about 10% of their estimated cost. With Facility Build, it's going to be about 2% of the estimated cost, and they do everything. They're a CES company. They've been working with Western, Mexico University, and have been in town, so they reached out to us. So, we're trying them on this project, and we'll see how that goes. Hopefully, it's a way that we can get the process moving a little faster and also save the county quite a bit of money. So, just an update on that. And then on the energy project, the scope of work has been determined, and LaLe Hilltop Securities is finalizing the documents that are going to be needed for the NMFA loan, and we should have those at next, next month's meeting for you guys to approve. And that's my report.
Question for Mr. Marleau?
So, Facility Build will do all the same services as the architect will?
They do. They actually do it all. When, when they're doing the design, they work, so they're working right now with Randy and with the chief Chavez. They are already in contact with contractors. They, they reach out to local contractors on that, so they are already starting to work on what the cost will be on that, and when, when they set the cost, that is the cost. There is no going out to bid, there is no low bid process on it. Everything is kind of a one package deal.
So, I would really be in favor of that if the local contractors get back with it.
So, do what, what do you attribute the price difference then?
I think because they, they do the whole project. You know, they've obviously got some way that they're, I'm assuming they've got some way that they're, they're being paid, you know, on the, on the management side of it too. But yeah, all we do is, we do a notice of intent that if we don't, and it's the same thing. Anytime we went to the architects that we've had under contract in the past, which we do not have any contracts right now, we've been out of contract on, on architectural services, we would pay them, they would do an initial assessment, and we would, we would write them a purchase order for the 10% that they brought to us and said this is their design cost. So, instantly, we were giving them a purchase order for that design, whether we went forward with construction or not. And with the Facility Builder, this Design Build Company, we give them a notice of intent that if we don't move forward with the construction, we will pay them the 2%, but we're not actually issuing a purchase order. We will issue a purchase order for the whole project as one whole.
Okay. Any further questions?
And you may have done this already. Whenever you have the scope of work and the financing documents for the energy project, I'd appreciate you receiving them instead of waiting for the board packet.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Manager, what do you have?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, just a few things. I wanted to let you know the auditors are in our office conducting our fiscal year 18 audit, and just to remind all the departments that we may be a little slow responding to POs and other items, as documents, the auditors request take precedence at this point. And also wanted to notify you that we did receive approval on our final budget, so we can move forward with our business. That's it.
Commissioner, your words.
So, I would just follow on what Mike said about the Tucasa meeting. Tucasa is scheduled to open on September 10th at 9:00 a.m. This is very exciting.
Mr. Marleau?
I really don't have comments, but I'll save that for Thursday, but I did want to ask a question. Is, do you think it's time we start looking to see if we're paying our people well at the jail? So, I mean, if we have eight vacancies and no one wants to work there, my gosh, something's got to be wrong.
Chairman, members of the board, unfortunately, it's the nature of detention centers across the state. It, it comes and goes. You know, we've had recent months where we were completely staffed. Now, you know, it's just people move on to other things. They figure out that this job is not for them. But when we did our salary survey, we found that we were in line with, with this area as far as what we were paying. It's, it's time that we do our, that we evaluate that again and do our survey to make sure that, you know, we're still within the current market trend for all of our positions. So, we'll be doing that assessment again this fall. As you, when we adopted that, we do that every two years, but we can go ahead and reach out to counties and just do a really quick survey of detention centers across the state and just see where we, we line up. We can do that rather quickly.
Thanks. Anything further?
Yeah, nothing.
Mr. Nothing, okay. If there's nothing further, then we'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Okay. You need to hurry.